...will come to order, please. Roll call.
Mr. Abraham?
Present.
Mr. Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Tonight, John Perkins has agreed to do our invocation, but first of all, I would just like to say that our thoughts and prayers go out to the family and friends of Michael, Monica, Joshua, Caleb Cruz, and to the Rosebauer Baptist Church congregation where Michael was a youth pastor. We pray that you find peace and comfort during this time of tragedy. So, I just wanted us to all keep them and their thoughts in our thoughts and prayers. And pledge of allegiance, Senator, Commissioner Wilson?
Sure. Will you pray with me? Lord God, thank you for giving us the ability to reason for ourselves, to think for ourselves, and the opportunity to govern ourselves. Thank you for elected officials and staff that work so hard to make Paducah a place that we love and can call home. Father, I ask that you watch over our community as we grieve the loss of the Michael Cruz family. I pray that you will strengthen and comfort those close to them. I pray that you will give all gathered here tonight wisdom in all that we do. In Yeshua's holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to-
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay, we have a property tax levy public hearing tonight. Do we do anything? No, okay. I'll just make a note in a minute.
Okay. You should have in front of you a couple of different graphs, charts. I've gone ahead and Steve had it put up on the board so that everybody in the audience could also see it. But they're exactly the same thing. That may be a little hard to see from a distance, but the purpose of the public hearing tonight is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed 25 and a half cent real estate tax levy. A hearing is required by Kentucky revised statutes when the proposed tax rate exceeds the compensating rate, which is 25 cents this year. Local government is permitted to adjust the tax rate upward by 4% over the compensating rate. Director, attention to the chart that's got the total of 18 years' tax levy history. And let me explain that chart to you. There's a legend on it, and as you can see, the red line, that's the maximum tax rate that we could have taken during that 18-year period. And the magic of the 18 years is that's as far back as I could find the record. But all those 18 years, that's the maximum, the red line. The next line typically is the blue line, which is the compensating rate. The compensating rate is the rate that we would set that would give us exactly the same amount of revenue that we had the year before based on a new tax base. And then you'll see the green line, the triangles, that's the actual tax levy taken, and then in 2015, that's the proposed tax rate. And you can see across the board, all 18 years, there was only one year ever that we ever took the maximum that we could take. 94% of the time, we did not take what we could have. We took something somewhat less. Later in the regular commission meeting tonight, the proposed property tax levy ordinance will be introduced. Staff recommends that you set the city's tax levy at the 25 and a half cents, the same as last year, which makes it 4 and a half cents lower than it was in the year 2001, as shown on the, let's see, on this chart. The red bars represent the school levy, which we collect for them, and the blue bars represent the city. And as you can see over that period of time, ours has gone down and been flat for a number of years. And if you really dig back in your memory, and I know it's, it was in some of the literature that we sent to you earlier, back as far as 1995, our tax levy was closer to 45 cents. Now it's 25 and a half cents. So, it's dropped down quite dramatically. The final reading for the levy ordinance will be next week, October the 14th. I'll be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you may have about any of this that we've just talked about.
Any questions for John? From the public? Pretty clear cut?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't. Just saying we're coming out of public hearing. Okay, well, now come out of public hearing. Continue with our meeting. Commissioner Abraham with the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 23rd, 2014, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Under municipal orders, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Necessary to Obtain a 2014 Matching Insurance Services Safety Grant Award in the Amount of $3,000 from the Kentucky League of Cities for Reimbursement of Reaccreditation Fees for the Paducah Police Department and Engineered Wood Fiber for Parks Playgrounds Be Adopted."
Second.
Cheryl, hi.
Hello. The Kentucky League of Cities is accepting safety grant applications for liability property component of the program until November 15th. As mentioned earlier, the city can apply for up to $3,000 with a 50-50 match under that program. Police Department is requesting reimbursement of their reaccreditation fees. Those fees total $4,319.62. 50% of that, or $2,159.81, will be requested from KLC, and the police department will make up the difference out of their budget. The Park Services Department is requesting the purchase of engineered wood fiber for the Cobb and Stewart Nelson playgrounds. The total project cost is $1,680.38. 50% of that, or $840.19, will be requested from KLC, with the balance coming from the Park Services Department budget. Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're, oh, yeah, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Since we're talking about the police department and grants and all, I just wanted to say that in Kentucky League of Cities, the Kentucky League of Cities Enterprise Cities Award, I just want to congratulate the Paducah Police Department for receiving the Enterprise Cities Award from the Kentucky League of Cities. The department won the award in the public safety category for "Don't Be Intexicated" program, and Paducah will accept the award at the KLC Awards Brunch this Friday in Louisville. The police department developed the program in 2012 with the goal of bringing awareness to the dangers of distracted driving. The program is so powerful is due to the department's partnership with Hillary Cotharp and her family. Hillary was involved in a horrible traffic crash in 2007. She was texting while driving. Her car rolled three times. She was ejected 75 feet. She's still recovering and spends much of her time in therapy. However, Hillary, her family and her close friends, the Paducah Police Department's Officer Gretchen Morgan, and the rest of the Paducah Police Department are passionate about making people aware of the dangers of distracted driving. So, I think that's why this award is so significant. It's something that they acted upon because of someone here in this community. So, I just want to applaud the police department for their work.
Good job, guys.
Okay, on to our ordinances. Adoption, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Paducah Area Transit System for Public Transportation Services." This ordinance summarizes follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 to be paid in equal quarterly allocations of $53,753, $750 for public transportation services for the Paducah-McCracken County area. This contract expires June 30, 2015.
Second? Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. And we're happy tonight to have Mr. Arthur Boink in here. He's the Director of Paducah Area Transit. If you'd like to come forward and say a few things to the commission, Arthur?
Yes.
And then we may have some questions.
It's fine. Mayor Kayla and commissioners, thank you very much for this opportunity to tell you about your transit authority. That's exactly what it is, and you're to be commended. Paducah has a lot of unique features and facts about it. I want to share one with you that you may not be aware of. You are the state of Kentucky's only 5311 city with a fixed route system. Now, let me translate that. You are the only city within the entire state of Kentucky with the population that it has, that has a fixed route system. Normally, fixed route systems are associated with communities of 50,000 or greater, or MPOs, of which Henderson, Kentucky is a metropolitan area with Evansville. So, that is a unique factor that Kentucky Transportation Department plays up quite frequently, and you're to be commended for being very insightful when you created Paducah Transit Authority. Some facts about Paducah Transit Authority. Currently, as related to the residents, we received or you contribute to us 2.7 cents per day, per resident. Ridership for the fixed route system only. The ridership for the fixed route system last year was 147,000 individuals. Of that number, there were some 20,000 disabled individuals who wrote the system. By disabled, we're saying they were non-ambulatory. They used wheelchairs or some other means to get. What I think, I also want to commend you on is that, you know, you some time ago recognized and embraced the role that public transportation plays. It plays a critical role both in economic growth, job creation, educational attainment, as well as addressing the environmental and social needs and the quality of life of the citizens. Through public transit, we're able to enhance and provide those services. Currently, we have a staff of 48 drivers, of which five of those are dedicated to what we call fixed routes. We have five routes within the city limits of Paducah. Four of those, we cover every area within the city of Paducah within 3/4 of a mile. Thus, those areas that are not covered by an actual fixed route running are covered under what's called ADA paratransit. If you live within 3/4 of a mile of any fixed route, you and unable to take, catch the fixed route system, currently, you are able to call the Transit Authority and arrange for a ride anywhere that you want to go within McCracken County for the fee fare of $2 per trip. That's a tremendous asset to increasing the livelihood of the senior citizens here in this area and those that are seeking medication. The budget for the Transit Authority overall is approximately $3.7 million, of which 1.9 million of those dollars are federal funds. The agency has to then match up the remaining balance of 1.7 million. Our revenue sourced from the fixed route is roughly $80,000, coupled with the $215,000 that we currently receive from the city of Paducah. Our costs for running the fixed route last year was deemed at a little over $550,000 for running the fixed route, of which I don't have to tell you, but gas is a major portion of that, insurance and salaries for the fixed route system. But as it is, we currently, hours of operation are from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM. There are some holes within that timeframe. We're not able to get students to West Kentucky that have an 8 o'clock class because we don't begin our running until 8 o'clock. If there are individuals that work in the mall areas of some of the fast foods, they're not able to utilize our service on the return home because we cease operation at 5. They can, however, use our, what we call, demand and response. That is at a slightly higher cost than what the fixed route offers. Subject to your questions, that's what I wanted to share with you. If you have questions about the fixed route, I've invited you all down to come and see the Transit Authority. You have one facility there that you should be very proud of. It just last year underwent a $1.4 million renovation. Again, I invite you to come, see your Transit Authority. I invite you to come and ride your Transit Authority.
That pretty much-
Any questions?
Well, we spoke earlier out in the corridor. The information that Mr. Boink related to us was exactly what I wanted a lot of folks to hear, the number of our citizens that utilized the transit system, the pros of that. We talk about being a, you know, we had a fellow here not too long ago talking about getting cars off the street and more folks using those type of, we have a public transportation system. Now, those holes in there, those need to be addressed. A lot of that, obviously, has to do with resources. So, working with that, trying to get those holes filled, I just think a lot of times that we take that, and when I say we, I'm being all-inclusive as citizens, we see the buses coming to and pro, and we kind of take that for granted. But it's a major, it's a major part of who we are as a city. I thank you for your leadership, and as far as getting, filling those holes, it's going to take some sitting down and talking to, and maybe we can get those filled.
What did you refer to besides fixed route? What was the other way?
Demand. It's termed "demand and response." That allows an individual to call that the day prior to needing a ride, and they're able to secure a ride. We do not provide same-day service. We're, naturally being a nonprofit, we do not compete against cab companies. That's one of the distinctions between the transit agency and, let's say, Keys Cab or some other company. They provide same-day service. We do not. You simply have to call us and tell us what time that you would want transportation prior to, and we're able to provide that. That is at, however, $1.75 per mile for the individual.
So, if someone called you every day or the day before, like, to go to an 8 o'clock class at the college?
Correct.
And they do that?
They can do that, yes. They could do that.
So, what would it, have you looked at the, do you have a lot of students that need to be out there for an 8 o'clock class? I'm just looking at, you really couldn't work an 8 to 5 job and use the transit system?
Not if you have to be there at 8 o'clock.
At 8, or you don't get off till 5?
We don't begin operations until 8, and we cease at 5. That was pretty much determined, Commissioner, by looking at the ridership when you have, let's say, the peak ridership during the day. The agency did run at one point from 6:00 in the morning until 6:00 in the evening. But again, because of budgetary constraints, we had to adjust those hours.
Do you go to the Information, what used to be the Information Age Park?
No, it's west, we run as far, and I'm going to call it in a westerly direction, we run as far west as Walmart on Hinkleville Road, the mall area, Walmart on Hinkleville Road, out through the VA area there. We don't run, we don't run very much in the county. I was told Paducah is not part of the county.
Well, actually, the Commerce Park, Information Age Park, is part of the city. And I know that there's a new employer out there. I don't know if there've been discussions with you about trying to help get their employees out there for tel-tech?
There has not been. We would welcome that discussion. There are other, you know, if you're doing it for jobs, it does open up, it was once called JAR, Job Access and Reverse Commute. There are possible grants that could be written if we're taking individual, known individuals to a job, but we're limited right now because of the time slot.
Okay. So, you would be open to discussions on that?
Definitely.
And for ours that might work with theirs? Of course, some of them, I think they do have an afternoon shift as well?
Definitely, we would be.
Okay. Would you have to have a certain number to participate?
I don't believe that there's a numerical requirement, Commissioner, that we would participate. What, I think, looking at it, and we've tried to, there are other things that we could do. We have smaller vehicles that are available.
Your contract.
So, we could also, you know, we could apply for what's called a deviated route. We could apply for job access and reverse commute, again, utilizing a much smaller vehicle. I think the challenge or the opportunity there would be to be consistent, so that if you staff it for that, that would have to, knowing that there's going to be that ridership on a consistent basis.
So, it's justifying the need and then finding the consistency?
Correct.
Is the capacity there to do that through a negotiated contract where federal subsidies weren't necessarily part of it? I mean, would you have the capacity there if the interest and demand was there?
Yes, we would have the capacity. As I said, we have 48 drivers. Now, one of the caveats is that in order to drive what we call the larger buses, the qualifications is there. If it's over 15 passengers, it requires CDL. If you step it down to where some of, I call them, in cutaways, some people refer them as the church buses or vans that they run around. Those only require Class D license. You can find those coworkers much easier than you can an individual-
Yeah, when they're getting out of-
-CDL.
Telitech wanted to negotiate with you or a group of their employees for four or five pickup points through town at a certain time to get there. You could do that through a negotiated contract basis.
In any negotiation that we encounter, would have to certainly have the blessings of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, but we currently do that, yes. There are contract services-
That meets a lot of the goals of the program through increased ridership. It's numbers-driven. That's what the feds want.
That is correct. But again, because we don't operate directly with FTA, we have, everything that we do has to be blessed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet.
So, they also, you know, are opening a facility downtown, which would probably be on your route, the Commerce Center on Kentucky, I guess Kentucky and Fourth, right there. But I think they will have day and afternoon positions there, too.
Okay.
So, they probably can get to work with you, or even people that work at the mall, they can get there on pats. They just can't get home if they get off after 5:00.
That's partly true. They can get there on pats, whether they work, whether it's prior to 8:00, but it's, again, under a demand and response. It's under a different program than using the fixed route system. So, we run demand and response from 5:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night.
Oh, okay.
Okay? But that's, that's a different system than-
Prearranged.
That's prearranged transportation.
But your fixed route would go by the mall, so that they could take that out there for employment?
Right. They could take the fixed route. Our fixed route cost is, I think, very reasonable. The ride on the fixed route is $1 if you are 65 or less. If you are a senior citizen or you're golden, it's free. But for the majority of our client, it's $1. If you're a student, it's half of that. It's 50 cents. So, makes it affordable.
But the demand is, that's a pretty pricey ride, isn't it?
At $1.75 a mile, if you're going-
Somebody had-
Going four miles, it's $7, you know? So, it comparatively speaking, yes, as opposed to, I can pay a dollar, ride to our transfer station, which is 850 Harrison, and then pay another dollar and get to any point that I basically want to go in Paducah.
However, I have used demand and response. My mother's in a wheelchair, and we have used it for doctor's visits. And let me just say, it is always timely. It is always clean. They're always very professional, and we are very much appreciative.
Thank you.
So, it is worth the money, in my opinion.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Unless you're working at minimum.
The demand and response.
True. That is, well, she's on a limited income, so let me just say, she is on a limited income, and we, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I understand it's a cost issue for you. So, it's a give and take.
And do you go out into the county any?
With fixed routes?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. We run, again, as far south as the Social Security Administration, which is Lone Oak, that part.
I was thinking you covered some other counties with some of your service.
We do cover other counties, but not under our fixed route. Our operating authority are the counties of Ballard, Marshall, McCracken, and Northern Graves. We cover all of those counties. However, that's done under a program that's, and I'm not trying to make you experts in transit, but it's done under a demand and response program, not our KMA, Kentucky Medicaid Association, but not under the fixed route system.
Okay.
Is the demand, the demand and response, is that also what we know as dial-a-ride? Or is that yet-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You dial-a-ride.
Any other questions?
Again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Educating us?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to ordinance introduction. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Fixing the Levis and Rates of Taxation on All Property in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Subject to Taxation for Municipal Purposes and for School Purposes for the Period from July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined." This is the purpose and the rate per $100. General Fund of the City, Real Property, .255; Personal Property, .390; Motor Vehicles and Watercraft, .390; For School Purposes, Paducah Junior College, Real Estate, .017; Personal Property, .017; Motor Vehicles and Watercraft, .031. The City of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. Paducah Independent School District, Real Property, .771; Personal Property, .771; Inventory, .771. So, the total tax rate per 100 for Real Property is 1.043; the total tax rate per 100 for Personal Property is 1.178; for Inventory, .0771; for Motor Vehicle and Watercraft, .421. Property taxes levied in herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $550, the payment shall be due on November 1, 2014, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2014. In the case of all other tax bills, payments shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1, 2014, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2014. The second half payment shall be due on February 1, 2015, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 28, 2015.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we do not vote on that tonight. City managers report.
Want to announce that the dedication, grand opening, ribbon-cutting, all of those things combined for the Ohio State, excuse me, Ohio River boat launch, and also the Greenway Trail, latest extension of that, has been set for October 22 at 2:00 PM, and I believe we're starting at the boat launch, correct? And the trolley will be, one or both will be involved in transporting people from one site to the other. I think we're going to provide some time for people to walk. Maybe we are, maybe, I'm not sure on that. But we're going to do a two-in-one and celebrate the opening, if you will, of those two wonderful public facilities, quality of life enhancements for the community. So, we're excited about that. I think it's-
They can bicycle also.
Yeah, they can bicycle. That way, they'll know they'll get from one to the other in time, or jog. We'll have somebody lead a jogging group, how's that? We are in the process of interviewing candidates for HR Director. That will continue next week. It will probably be a few weeks yet, two or three, before we have a candidate to bring forward, but that's going pretty well. forward, but that's going pretty well. Last thing I want to do is ask Steve Doolittle and David Puckett to come forward and give you and the public an update on the hotel project with respect to the architecture of the hotel. And we also would like to speak about the progress with the upgrade of the former showroom space adjacent to the convention center. We're going to need the screen, Steve?
Yeah, I think we're fine. Start there. Should show up pretty well at home. These first couple slides involve the hotel, and so this is the site plan, and this traces back to the development agreement that describes Track 1 and Track 2. Track 1 is 600 North Fourth, the site of the pavilion right next to the convention center, and this demonstrates what looks to be, pretty finally, the footprint and the location and the future layout of the parking for the hotel. David, why don't you describe the major elements here?
Cursor would help.
This is the pedestrian bridge connection, and actually, we, about 10 minutes before this meeting, we took a printout of the drawing that BFW's been working on, and it didn't read very well, so we sort of went over it with some markers and updated it. So these lines are a lot crisper than are what's showing up up there. But we have, where is this? Okay, we have basically the convention center right here. Here's the show space, or portion of the show space.
Showroom.
Showroom. Now I'm off the, oh crap. All right. I gave you all an early shot.
Not to miss any more.
This is the flood wall, and this is the other, we might as well just go ahead and jump to that one.
You lost everybody's interest.
Okay, so that's, that is, this is the money shot right here. This is what all the various drawings have led up to. So this is the shot, and it sort of shows the connection, the direct connection to the river. And obviously, we're looking at the side that is facing downtown, and we're coming in on Executive Boulevard, we're kind of at the light, right at the intersection right there. And there are people up on the indoor-outdoor bar area.
I got them up there.
They looked, it looked to be a little lonely space, but you can see all the people down at the bottom rushing to get up to the bar.
I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, that's great. So when's groundbreaking?
I knew that was going to come. Our intention is to close on the loan next month, and the drawings are currently at about 50%, and so they're moving through those with the mechanical electrical plumbing. The site plan has been revised several times. That is, we're pretty close to the final version on that, which is what you all had seen earlier. And so that should start coming through for approval within the city here shortly. And just, the sooner the better.
It looks good.
Thank you.
I know this isn't the sexy part, but anticipation of this, we have a number of things on our site we have to get out of the way related to the dome. Of course, we take the dome down, but we leave behind the mechanical equipment, there's a little tension frame building that houses one of the airlocks, the generator, and some of that other stuff. So, of course, we store the fabric off-site, but we're, Rick is in the process of picking up the rest of our property and preparing it for their occupation next month. And then back to the, back to this. I think when PRDA approved the major thematic elements, we had a very good discussion about getting a hotel that didn't look like it was an interstate hotel, that really fit the urban fabric of downtown Paducah. And that was a tough design choice, given the rather contemporary style of the convention center, how dominating the river is and the historic lower town and historic downtown. So getting the right contemporary building to fit in that location, and getting the room density that the city wanted, and getting the quality product was not insignificant. So I think this whole feature over here, it's very unusual, it's not common, the Hyatt Hotel is not common, and I think it will be a stunning, make a stunning entryway to the downtown from that side. And I think, and as people are entering Fourth Street, all the way on the south side of downtown, this part is so tall and so high, I think on the drawings, we show this at, almost spread at 90 feet right there. So that, you know, pretty well equates with a nine-story building, that height, if you, an average downtown building being 10 feet per story. So that's going to be, it doesn't really show in the picture, but it's, that's going to be a dominating feature downtown. And then on to what we're working on with the showroom project. This is the Julian Carroll Convention Center. This is to, because this is going to take the pavilion dome out and down. What's in blue is existing. That was part of our 2009 renovation work that we did of the ballrooms and the meeting space. And what's shown in this peach or pink color is, really belonged to the hotel, but was not torn down. So when the city acquired the hotel, this was the former kitchen area, and this was the area commonly referred to locally as the showroom, and then this was the Kincaid's restaurant and lounge here. The city did not tear those down at the time, partially because it would have tore open a bigger hole in the convention center, and we would have had to have built something back. Secondly, because it was partially built out over the river, and getting something like that permitted today would be difficult, if not impossible. And thirdly, we thought we might need the space at some point. So that point is here today. So we have BFW, Markham Engineering, and Peck Flannery working on this. That, these are their drawings, that is in process. We'll be out to bid with that project in December. We'll be back to you for approval of a contract in December, and we'll begin work first part of January, have a 100-day schedule. It's not terribly complicated, you know, this is all one room. This is 24,000 square feet, that's all one room. We're going to extend the existing corridor, the nice, the very nice corridor that you go in when you visit the ballrooms, we're going to just extend that through what was formerly the kitchen for the Executive Inn. Here, we'll extend the back of house, all these back of house services that have to do with catering and getting material in and out. We'll extend that to here, so we'll have this continual back of house for transportation of tables, chairs, and all the things that go into setting up a show. And the little uncolored part right here of this former 9,000-square-foot kitchen is all that we're reducing for the future kitchen that will come in a future phase. We've, working with Senate Hospitality, who will be the operator of the convention center, and the hotel developers, we've done a fairly significant study of future kitchen needs, and we've got that squeezed down to the minimum space that we need to make a future kitchen work in that spot. So, and the question, will we be ready for the quilt show? Failure's not an option, so yes, we will be. But it's all indoor work, we have very little outdoor work to do, and it's primarily one room. The tough, busy work is building this bathroom group right here. This bathroom group will look just like this one over here, so we'll replicate that bathroom group there. We need that for code to service all this new square feet that's going into production. This had bathrooms before, but it was in the hotel, and that was what we, part of what we tore down.
Steve, where does the overhead, the sky bridge from the hotel through the center, where does it come in?
If, when you're looking at the building and you see this outdoor balcony, it's the first room to the left, which is the Eisenhower Room. That's the one that will come out. It's right next to the bathroom. It's our smallest meeting room on that floor, so the bridge will intersect here, and there'll be a set of doors that will lead into the hallway.
So it'll take away that one meeting room?
Yeah, we lose one, net loss of one meeting room, yep. But while it's not in the convention center, there's that much, there's double that amount being built into the hotel. So there's really not a net loss of space because of the bridge. We actually end up gaining a little bit because of what's being built into the hotel. Any questions? Yeah, we'll leave it right there, that's the...
And we have the second reading on the bonding for this project coming before the...
Next week, on the 14th, the second reading of the IDB, which involves the lease for the property, so.
Can we get that on t-shirts, maybe?
See David Puckett.
Everyone's got my number.
I'm worried about you.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
That would have won, right, true.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
You'll be here next week?
I will.
Because I won't be here.
Okay.
Thank you. Any Commissioners' comments? Any public comments tonight? Okay.
How are y'all tonight?
Hey.
Good. My power bill went down $200 this month, so I'm happier.
Well, you must have used less kilowatts.
I did.
The rate didn't go down. Now, that's what I sort of, I've got several things tonight, but I won't go on too long. Y'all, in conjunction with the Paducah Power Board, put off the rate increase for October, is that, it's probably going to go?
Paducah Power?
We didn't.
That's all Paducah Power?
Yeah, we don't do that.
Well, y'all have sort of been, the pressure, I guess, y'all put on them maybe, or the public pressure, so you don't know whether or not that's going to go into effect.
There'll be no rate change next month.
It'll still be the same in November as it is?
The PCA will remain as it has been the last...
215.
I believe that's correct.
It was proposed to 3223. And then the other thing, the mayor, you made that statement when they did that Genova product, and I assumed that that would help Paducah Power. But then I wonder how that's going to help Paducah Power when you've got to be selling that power to loss, the 5.2 cent rate, to new customers, when the existing customers are paying 13.3, and their cost of production, that power has got to be much higher than 5.2. It looks like we are subsidizing a new business that's coming in Paducah.
While it's, while it costs more than that to produce, we can't sell it for that much, so it's being sold on the market for considerably less than even what we're selling it to Genova for. So, well, it might seem an odd set of circumstances.
It does seem odd, but you're selling it.
Well, that being the case, it creates nonetheless an opportunity to divert that power from the market where it's doing nobody in Paducah any good, and doing some good for the community to help a new company come to town and grow.
You mean, if you had to sell it on the open market, you couldn't even get 5.2 cents?
No.
Well, what is like the current rate of power on the wholesale market?
I can't tell you that, it changes hourly, sir.
Okay, I mean, roughly.
Well, there are people that are more on top of that than I am, but that information's available if you'd like to call Dave Carroll at Paducah Power tomorrow, I'm sure he'd be happy to share that with you.
Another thing, I've had a lot of people say to me, business people, that y'all needed that, have for years, that Paducah Power should start having their meetings at night, so the public and the working businessmen and the working people could show up.
Oh, he can pass that along to the board.
Going to next, when do they meet? Monday?
Monday, I believe it.
Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have an executive session. All right? Meeting's adjourned.